Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm calling people to order. The first point on the agenda is questions and comments on the floor. Are you ready?
Erna.
Nick. So the first point, we reports, the first one is do it before it makes it way.
Yes. So first, the first senior for back in person full time and I'm very excited to come every day and see all the wonderful people that they have not seen in months. I'm going to definitely see a more positive vibe among seniors from being in person all time. Senior Mayhem Day was the last overwhelming day. We had successful bake off with a variety of delicious cupcakes that were all eaten before we took them out of the room. He was very sad, but we were all happy. We applauded him.
It beat me to it.
They were gone. Russell, Steve, Mike, Austin, there was just, there was no idea. We also made some vivacious tight ass shirts along with many other fun activities such as scary movies, to which I cannot partake in. I don't like that. Promises turned out on sale for a reduced price of $35. The lower price makes prom more affordable for all and everyone, and everyone really appreciates it. Our, we have planned our first senior trip. That was delayed unfortunately due to the weather on, we will go on today, which was fantastic. The weather was beautiful. I only fell a couple of times. Everyone had a great time. And we had about 30 kids that showed up at the place. And vaccinations were offered and we had several students and staff take advantage of it. Post-prom has been approved and committees are busy planning for this kind of exciting event. We are currently going on our T-shirt design. The guidelines are now less restricted and more interestingly about our graduation ceremony and everyone still having to be able to graduate as a class. We are also excited as well that we are not restricted to dance songs during our prom. And then our senior trip will be on June 14th to Grand Canyon State Park and then afterwards we will be going to Dave and Buster's.
Thank you. Glad to give such a positive report.
Yes.
Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Next thing will be your final ask to make in the board.
I think I'm gonna handle that. I always hate following Kelly like she says so much energy. So in your pack you have a variety of different documents. One is a NAREC document that looks like this. This is for us to move ahead and give the smart boards into all the classrooms through the budget this year. It's important that we get these out there and I think this is the year to do it. People have to do it and we've named a bunch of people to do it this year. And then your next document.
Just to go back to that real quick, let's pick back up what Pete said. There's two things with the smart board blowout. Is one, just getting them in time. Chris did a phenomenal job last year about jumping on the prom books and we got to look at these, you know, I don't say love you, but we did that, you know, we did that for a reason. The same thing's gonna happen next year when grant funds are pushed out and everyone puts the buttons together. Chris has kind of got these locked up right now. We did a great job of again going out and getting them and locking them up. So we approved them. We should have them for August, correct?
As of right now, if they receive a P O tomorrow, we're scheduled for end of June. So, but that will, as monies go through and orders go through, that will push out, push out, push out. But right now, we should get it early summer, which would facilitate us getting them up before the start of this full year and coordinating onsite trading.
And that gives us the quote of all classrooms?
There is, there is one missing from this order that I'm buying out of my budget because with Promethean, we're going with a different vendor. The first board we buy, we actually get at half price, a reduced price. So that is left off of this NAREC bid. It will be a separate purchase for one board, but at half of the, half of the regular price.
And this is available, so we expense this year, we get that next year. And it will be expensed actually, so it's got an opportunity for us to jump on again technology. So Chris, when will the expense happen? Will they, will they bill us when they actually ship it or will they then bill us or will they bill us when we order?
Um, I'm not off the top of my hand. I don't know how C D W bills. Do they bill once we order or is it once we ship? Promethean will be from C D W. Okay.
If it's done now, it'll be, that's what it's about.
Okay, so we'll go on that this year. That, that's what I have a question. Okay. We're okay with only four of that. The cost will see them there up 36966 and include all fees. The good part about getting reimbursable expenses, you get it next year. The bad part is they charge extra fees and they take extra tuition bonuses. So there's no way around that. So if we're okay with only four of that, we would like them to be four of that. So this is one action that we recommend to the board to take. We have a couple others. So do you want to vote on them individually or do you want to hold the hook to later in approval stage?
Why don't you just go, why don't you do it as it comes up? Just get it done.
So make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the smart board purchase through NAREC.
Session.
Any questions, discussion, on the paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Then as you remember probably the last one, we talked a little bit about the, the two pots of money. We have the SIRSa and the ARBA. Two different funding sources that we got from the state and federal governments for some of the code relief. The SIRSa we're gonna use to...
We have 56 papers here and they're not put in the right order. So we have to search for the other ones. SIRSa.
Do you want to do this first because that's the approval?
No, I can.
Okay.
Right, is your approval. No, I'm just asking.
I, I thought we were doing both again, but we're good. We can do this. So while you're looking for your SIRSa and your ARBA, I have some colors. We can talk, there's a invoice in here or a quote for graduation for audio visual in around $5,700 and we include the video screen, sound system and all the setup and what we need to conduct graduation outside. We feel like we need the sound system and the video because even though it's gonna be outside, the pods are pretty far apart and not everybody's gonna be able to see from there.
So there's 65, think about it, there's 65 down and you're gonna have to pull them out and you'll be able to, and you know, my fault, feet fall away across. So to visualize and see everybody, the screen is 10 by 20 and is extremely clear. The guy told you, you'll be able to see it from behind a few ways. So we're showing the graduates coming across, but at the same time, parents and family, they push it, they go to it well. We also have a guest speaker who won't be live, so there'll be a video of the guest speaker so we can actually show it as well. Plus the audio, think about it, the audio is gonna spread out throughout the facility so everybody can hear because this is kind of all spread out. So this cost includes the audio, the screen, the camera and all the setup and tear down. Four three days if you run into rain, rain days too. Obviously we'll have to do this in the future. Hopefully we're back in our classroom and we can also make a wish and go out of regrets this year too, but this, this to help the space. So many people so far.
Do you need another motion to do that?
Yes. 57.
57.
Yes.
Can I, can I put your motion?
I'm gonna put motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
One thing, I just realized that we didn't ask Nick, the texts, are they gonna be here during?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions, discussion? Please do not ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Vozes?
So can you be able to locate SIRSa?
It was number three.
Oh, number three, thank you.
So SIRSa is, is money that can be used for a broad brush kind of approach and not as many stipulations with it. We're able to, to offset some of the teacher costs for year one and year two. And the total for the two years is 1,239. First year will be 668,000. Questions on that one?
This is end of the round?
That's a federal student. So this is, we gotta go back, there's two of them. They break them down into, and SIRSa and ARBA, right? And SIRSa has kind of broad brush, broad brush, you know, here's money that you can allocate for expenses and if necessary, that's still your budgetary needs for those parts. The next one is the ARBA, which has some things tied to it like learning loss, summer enrichment, after school programs, summer school, something like that last time about A I S, AIDS, excuse me, hybrid AIDS, A I S help in terms of math and E L I. So that one has a smaller brush per se. You gotta spend a certain amount of money on certain things, so.
So with that, this is one that's color coded. We're gonna need to be spending around $100,000 on the summer school program, another additional $100,000 on after school programming.
That's what's required, but we're spending 150 and 105.
Gotcha. Color money. So 150 is for the summer school program, so that's what we need to do for...
Could I, before you went to that, I just had a question about this on the SIRSa.
SIRSa question.
So this goes for 21, 22 and 22, 23.
Right.
It's a significant amount of money. What happens in 23 for the tour?
These expenses are in your general fund balance. They're pulling out in the next few years. So the way, the way to think about this is this grant is reimbursing things from our budget that we're using from a pandemic or a reeducation and some of the expenses we've already expended in some cases as well. And as Nick said and Pete said, this one doesn't have a whole lot of strings attached to it. So what we did is we just basically took a broad spectrum of what were some of the impacts. So we had to hire extra cleaners, right? Things like that. So those expenses are in the year and we're breaking them out across the two years.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. It's okay.
And then the blue coloring on this is the, the learning loss, which we need to spend a million, around a million dollars, can't read.
1.056 million.
1.056, good. And we're spending 1,113,000. This is stuff that we'll form public, or invite the public to have input to and have a public committee to kind of flesh out the details. We've just kind of put a little bones, bones together and then voted some ideas and we will be finalized or some.
Yeah, so the things that you'll see here are temporary resources, different than the other one, right? These are temporary resources that we need, for example, we need more help with math or whatever, right? These are broken over a three year period of temporary assistance to get students back to the learning levels that they should be at or to infuse an after school program or a summer program. So it's those special interventions.
And then the, the last form we had is a, the fund balance reserve plan. This kind of talks to where this all comes together and so we can project where we'll be through the 24, 25 school year.
So the net on this is we've projected out our fund balance through, as Pete said, the end of 24 and what are, are contributions to some of the reserves that we approved to create in our last meeting and I put on the, uh, approved. So if you carry this out at the end of 2024, we would still have a 1.6, almost 1.6 million dollar fund balance, which would be 6.45% of our budget, which is still more than we're supposed to have, so we're still keeping a healthy fund balance. But we have enabled ourselves to fund the reserve balances of T R S, E R S, capital reserve and equipment reserve that will total 3741, about 4.2 million dollars. And if you recall, the reason, our strategy was this is so that the reserves are sitting there and we can use them over time as they're needed versus impacting our tax budgets.
Any questions?
We'll have a community meeting in June. Gather more input, um, um, anyone from the community, back to the staff, put together a final plan, we'll propose some ideas and that plan then will be put on our website in July and then we'll have to submit expenditure and, and the plan itself crosswise to, to the stage.
Just the last thing is Nick and me obviously spent tremendous amount of time researching and staying on topic, so appreciate it. Got to tremendous amount of input from the district and the teachers and administration, so I feel like we've got a great start here for running that budget this year.
Since we're here, can we look at a date for the community meeting? Did you want to look for the lens?
Yes, we'll have to do it in June.
Which would, before our, we're being on 15th, or? On 15th, we did, I mean, either we're asking here or they're asking. Anyone wants to? Uh, I'm thinking 5:30 to make sure.
You do, you do not need a second.
You don't, but we would imagine there's something else in the board. Yeah.
I'd tell it if I could, but I can't.
One second.
Okay, with this?
So we have a board meeting. We have a community meeting that night too? The 15th, the retirement, which came from the 10th. All right, I did not move that. So did we have a committee meeting before the board meeting? Here was gonna be this community meeting. I think I can move that. All right, I think I can do it in the pan.
Do we have any historical knowledge on whether we get the best participation for the community?
Let's, yeah, you know what, let's backtrack. It was a hiccup with being in college at the high school and I need to move to the 15th. Just before the board meeting, so. Move, I can't remember. What's that? 50 to 16 on a Wednesday?
I think, I think you're gonna want something more like seven o'clock, so if you're gonna go home, he can then come to the meeting, but that's a more personal. I guess that's what I was telling us, make it convenient for the community. We're gonna be our second.
Seven o'clock and 16. We don't, of course, have a fine week and we have a graduate, great graduation, nice to the graduation.
Okay, should be going with 16 and seven? Okay.
Yeah? Okay. What was that? That's for, that's for ARBA. Correct. We gonna hold it cafeteria? Oh, it's ringing. We are.
Okay, the next one on the agenda is a presentation on diversity, equity and inclusion. And I just want to say, I think it's very appropriate that we have it on the anniversary of the murder of George Floyd, and which is also, which really brought the question of social justice nationwide to all kinds of people in communities. And I think it's very appropriate that we are developing over here in our school district, we begin to address the questions of equity, inclusivity and diversity. And I think it's very, I'm proud that our district is one of the ones we in this, and I think that we're very serious about it and we hope that it will be something that will really bring us forward into a, a society that really understands the question of social justice. So with that, I will turn it over to Nick.
All right. Oh, it's okay. Couldn't tell if it was a sneeze or a choke or...
Let's see. Well, what do you think? I just want to say to the visitors, thank you for coming and thank you for sitting through our meeting and you know, we look forward to meeting. Okay. A little dark, right? Yeah?
Yeah.
All right. Any reason why you think?
Take the picture and picture off.
What's that?
The picture and picture, take off the...
Do you want your in call? People online are supposed to see it too, right?
It's all from dark though.
All right.
Yeah. Minimize that about showing the HTML script.
It's a little dark.
Really dark.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, your screen looks very dark too, no? What's interesting is it's super dark on this.
I know. Oh, it's on. All right.
We got you on the remote as well.
Yeah, it's okay. Spring is on. All right.
Yeah, one wouldn't think the output would be affected.
Let me ask you this question. Andrew, can you pull up the presentation? Can you pull up the presentation that's in the board? We just won't flip through the...
Sorry, I just saw all of a sudden one dark somewhere in the zone. No?
It's on the board notes.
The board notes? Okay. This is in a PDF, so I don't know if it's gonna share the same way.
What do you mean?
It's not in a...
Scroll down. All right.
Yep.
I'm gonna just scroll. You know?
Yeah, but how'd you do that? That's not gonna do it though. How'd you even do that?
You want me to scroll for you?
Yeah, could you?
I got you.
All right. Always start off our presentation with our mission, that, vision and values. Kind of always talk about every learner, together, world ready. And our mission, again, every day in our school, we foster relationship based safe learning environment and provide access for all students to fully participate in educational process and incorporate skill development, academic achievement with class of interest, talents, passions and activities. And we try to educate the whole child.
Sorry.
Go back.
It's so touchy.
Uh, so they become self-aware, critical thinkers who are culturally and socially conscious adults, which kind of fits this perfect. Our values, accountability, community involvement, creativity, inquiry, empathy, engagement, perseverance, respect and transparency. Ned?
I'm sorry, everybody.
First day, I don't think this. Statement. There we go. So when we look to design this, you know, I've been meeting with... So when we look to design this, you know, I've been meeting with our board president, also reaching out to local organizations, and also the New York State Education Department recently rolled out a DEI plan, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan, that we have to develop for our school district. And it fit perfect because we were already in the planning stages. This just came out literally two weeks ago from the state. So it was right in accordance with our plan, so we try to mirror that obviously as much as possible. You know, what's our statement when we're talking about DEI? "We want to establish a culturally responsive ecosystem of success that is built upon a foundation of diversity, equity, inclusion, and opportunity. This will be accomplished through education, professional development, outreach, community outreach, collaboration with all the stakeholders, respect, caring, and relationship building." And how we built this is through the statement will drive the purpose, drive the design, and the implementation. So what is our purpose in all, in this? First, we want to explore, ensure that we explore the issues relating to equity, diversity, and inclusion. And we wanted to define those words first, which is most important. For us, our definition of diversity is a representation of a uniqueness, cultural and lived experience that make up our community. What are the, what are those different, what makes us unique? What makes us different? Equity: equal access to opportunities for all, with the understanding that fair is not always equal, but barriers are removed to make sure we give everybody an opportunity. And inclusion: the practice of valuing differences in order to foster a sense of belonging and empowerment. So those are our three driving factors. And we wanted to mirror the initiatives of the New York State Education Department, so I don't want to go into all of it, but if you just want to, if we can click and come back to it, or if we can't, I don't know if we can actually. Yes, this is what the New York State Education Department has kind of released in the last couple of weeks. And they're looking at a DEI framework and policy statement, which is very similar to ours, a culturally responsive sustaining education, which we're taking a lot of the information from, digital equity and professional learning. But more than anything, go back to the culturally responsive sustaining education. This is pretty much a step-by-step process, so if we go through here, a lot of clicks. One more, the culturally responsive. Scroll down. This is their framework. That they like all districts to kind of start and work from. Keep going down. Keep going a little bit more. Right there. You'll see this a lot. This is what they've kind of based everything around. And this is new. This is, like you said, a couple of weeks old, and we're trying to sift through this. We want to look at a welcoming and affirming environment. We want high expectations and rigorous instruction. We want an inclusive curriculum and assessment. We want ongoing professional learning and support. And say, what does that look like? Well, ongoing professional learning support, for example, diversity, equity, inclusion, training, examining implicit biases, interrogation of beliefs and assumptions. We want to support this in our curriculum. We want to, you know, we want to look at all sides of everyone's demographic background and different diversity. Welcoming, excuse me, high expectations and rigorous instruction. We want student-led civic engagement, critical examination of power structures, project-based learning on social justice issues, and student leadership opportunities, which we will explore and develop. It's gonna take some time though. This stuff doesn't happen overnight, and we want to make sure we roll things out step by step. We want to do it with fidelity. We just don't want to jump into something. We all know we're in a, we're in a business of initiatives, right? New thing comes forward, jump into it and go into it, but then leave it alone after a year. We don't want to do that. We want this to long haul. We want change, we want cultural change, we want understanding, we want education, educational process to it all as well. We have inclusive curriculum and assessment, we want current events that build into our instruction, students are co-designers, help with our curriculum a little bit, and some instructional strategies that adopt to diverse learning styles. And then welcoming in an affirming environment. Collect responsibility to learn about student cultures and communities, which is extremely important, close relationships with students and families, and social emotional learning programs. So you can kind of see how all this kind of tree kind of fits all together. Want to go back to ours? There's a lot to unpack, you might say. And we want to promote equitable opportunities that help students thrive. We want to develop students' ability to connect across lines of difference. We want to evaluate historical marginalized voices and make sure that the students should get every side of the story through history and through, and through our great history that we have here in our country. Empower students as agents of social change and create a vehicle for community outreach to affect change. We want to include everybody. Again, it's gonna take some time. Scroll down. You just saw that, we went through it. That's kind of our base. Our design, what are, how are we gonna do this? Well, we're gonna look at a curriculum review. We're gonna look through our curriculum and see how we're teaching certain aspects of diversity, inclusion, and equity, right? What have we been teaching, and are we telling every side of the story? And how can we kind of make sure that we're giving our students the best possible experience with that? We want stakeholder committee and outreach. We'll devise stakeholder groups in our district with students and faculty staff, and also parents and community members. We'll go through professional development for our faculty and staff, and we'll have student engagement through constructive and proactive collaboration. Students just aren't gonna, you know, okay, here's a lesson and go through it. They're gonna be actively engaged in this. And then we want to look at our recruitment and hiring practices as well. Scroll down. What's some of our preliminary implementation? Well, June through August, we're gonna develop plan ideas. Like I said, three weeks ago, this rolls out from the state. Probably about two or three months ago, myself and Dr. Brody started kind of in-depth talking about how this plan would work for next year. Obviously, COVID got in the way a little bit, so it hiccuped us a little bit. September, we're looking to roll out some faculty and staff professional development. There's an organization that we're talking to now called Progressive Partner, Progressive Partners, who have worked with schools all across the Northeast. A lot about diversity, a lot about equity. Also, we're looking to infuse some of this in our start day with our students. And then we want to branch out to stakeholder community outreaches, and then also our student committees. And we also reached out to another school district, it was Rush Henrietta, which is a little larger school district than us, a little different demographic, but they have put an incredible program together the last couple of years, and has really, and they've really kind of branched out. They've hit, you know, maybe phase two and three of this plan as opposed to where we are in phase one. And we're gonna use them as well to help us through this. Because here's the thing too, every community is different, every school district is different. And we want to make sure whatever fits our community and district fits well. And we just can't mirror anybody else's. We have to craft it and design it around what fits for us. So very preliminary, the basics from the beginning, and we'll be looking to kind of, I think our first, our first steps, continue the planning in the summer, roll out some PD and professional development for our faculty and staff, so people can start to understand where we're going with this. And then let's start to get community input and involvement, and start to get things on the table. And listen, we're gonna talk about some uncomfortable things. We're gonna have to talk about different, diverse situations, people, situations. We have poverty, we have racial issues, we, there's a bunch of different things, right? And we want to look at the broad brush and all that. And we want to bring things to the forefront, we want to bring things to the table to make sure that we are affecting change, right? Everybody's a little different, and we want to be welcoming that, right? And we want to understand why everybody's a little different. We also want to give our students the educational model, both sides of the story, the whole story, through history, through things that have gone on, the things that continue to go on, and how we progress that along as we move further, you know, with this cultural change, cultural shift. Dr. Brody, can you fill in more that I missed, or?
Well, I just want to say that, you know, one of the things that we're hoping to address is that a lot of people don't really have a good self-awareness of what some of their biases or, you know, ideas might be. And one of the things that we're gonna be working on is helping people to identify those so that they can then deal with them and begin to overcome some of those implicit biases. The other thing that we're really concerned with is that this is a fairly homogeneous community, but many of our students are gonna be moving out into the world that is much more diverse and much more culturally and racially diverse than can be there. And we want them to be fully able to deal with that situation from a position of social understanding and, you know, and acceptance and, you know, being able to not be, you know, shocked by being in a very diverse environment. And that's one of our roles.
Board, any questions from the board? And this is a work in progress, like many things, and we want to make sure we roll things out correctly, we want to make sure that we're mirroring as much as we can to the New York State Education Department, and we want to implement. And we're not gonna, you know, we don't want to dive into something too quick, and we also don't want to, again, we're notorious for, okay, run with it, shut it down people's throats, and get through something, and we don't want to do that. This has got to be done with fidelity, it's gonna take some time.
Yes, I don't have questions, but I do have some comments. To your point of it needs to be unique and fit our community and district, I think we need to also look at that from a statement perspective. And, you know, we started this conversation in our retreat last summer, and I think we need to, it's great to look at what State has given, but I think we need to continue to ground it back to our community and what our district needs. I think there's a couple of principles that I would suggest us considering included. I think in the statement itself, I think we should talk about social justice, and we should also talk about valuing people.
What was the last one?
Valuing people. I think both of those are missing from State, and I think they're crucial for these topics.
Valuable people.
Valuable people. The next comment I have is I think that inclusion is in the eye of the holder, right? Whether they feel welcome and comfortable. So we have to also look at how are we going to assess whether people feel comfortable in our environment versus they just keep their mouths closed and don't express their opinions, right? So I think in my mind, as I review this material, it made me really reflect again on how are we going to assess our school climate? And I think that needs to become a key component of an assessment tool that we use for our district. And then the third thing I would suggest is that we look at some of the external definitions for diversity, equity, and inclusion. One of the things that I think was missing, particularly from the equity component, is the concept of ensuring that there's fair treatment and that we focus on policies and procedures that give access to people. And I think as, if we look externally to some of those definitions, I think it might broaden our horizons on what we might want to embellish a little bit on those definitions for ourselves as a district. The last comment I would make is I would encourage us to focus this back to our values, and we might need to revisit, maybe we have some missing values from our district, and definitely include the values of respect and empathy. Both are extremely connected to these topics, and we ought to make sure that we have them defined and incorporated in a way that that's understandable to people.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Ned. Obviously, this is going to be my only... Okay, so our next thing is approvals. We have the approval of the budget vote. And they have motion. Okay, any discussion? See, none of us for vote, all in favor. Close. Thank you. Next is a memorandum of understanding. This has to do with Christian Jurislim. We discussed this previous year. And any questions or comments about it?
This is the person who was missing the debate, right?
I'm sorry, is this a motion?
Motion.
Second? Okay, any further discussion or questions?
I just want to ensure that this is the approach that isolates this to individual action, correct?
It says that lots of presidents have had times, you know, just...
Want to make sure. Our Chinese are confident.
Say anything further? Okay, all in favor? Close. Right? Next, we are to personnel. I will ask for motion for consent agenda. All in favor? Okay, close. Okay, so let's just, what I'd like to suggest is that we go through the first few points and see if there are any questions. And once we get to the hiring, just rather than go through each one, I'll just ask if there are any questions on any, any particular one. Is that agreeable? Yes? Okay. So the contract update.
This is now on approval, more, we have contracts in terms of vacation time.
Was it vacation or sick? I didn't notice which one.
It was...
Have we already done this?
It was both. It was both. We formally approved it on...
We didn't formally approve for lead. But it's the same things that were previously, right?
Yes. Did the first one quite how we did it in another session, but we didn't formally.
Okay, then, um...
I didn't go compared to the other contracts, but I just wanted to confirm.
It was kept.
Okay, then the extended leave request. This is for Patty Conchran, as she knows, she's having health issues, and would like to extend the leave to the end of June.
Very good, just, you know, but you... Which that was an issue.
Okay, any questions there? And then extend this substitute, which would extend stepping times up to from June 11th to June 25th.
Is she the substitute?
Yes. And then we have three, two substitute cleaners that are substitute now. Are there any questions on any votes?
You have your selected.
Okay, then we have the whole list of appointments, so if you were kind enough to come and join us this evening, all the questions on any votes.
Um, yes. Open P. Anybody have any questions before that was?
Are we done?
Yeah. So my question was, I noticed some of more term and some of more not. And I just, you know, you guys are interglean, intricately...
Intricly.
Say it again.
Intricly.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that isn't the word I meant. That's the one that came out of my mouth. You guys are very involved in this to the perspective of keeping all of this straight, what's temporary and what's not coming in under you. And seeing them in the list here was a little hard for me to, okay, where did that fit in? So when I, I was fine until I got to the maths, because I noticed those were temporary. And I didn't remember whether we had any permanent openings in math that...
No. No, these were the grand problem ones.
Okay, so these were the learning.
Correct, learning process, yeah.
Anything else?
My next question was, just out of curiosity, are either of these sciences for physics?
No, but one is very happy to get a certification to make sure that they offer it.
Anything else?
What are we doing about the part-time social studies? That was the other part of that retired.
With the current.
Okay, so spreading it?
Yeah.
Those are my questions.
Okay, any else?
Is the counselor, is possible just for one year?
Yes, that was the grand problem, correct.
Should we, because we need to go over that detail under the finance. Should we restate from a financial perspective that each of those, what's the right term? Learning loss positions have different lengths of time. And there are one-year renewables up to the period that we have those set aside for. And as we discussed in our last board meeting, we will review this on an annual basis to make sure that we're making progress in the right places and do we have to read us a little bit?
Any other questions, comments? In seeing them, I would ask for vote, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, well, I just want to welcome all of our new employees. I want to say that I hope that your stay here will be long and productive and enjoyable. And we really look forward to your contribution to our district. And so that we can get to meet you a little bit, since you bothered to come here. I'd like to suggest that we call a recess at this point in the meeting. So that we can meet you and also there are some cookies and water there for us to eat while we leave.
So I do want to do one thing, I want to get through, I think, the rest of the old new business. Do that before writing the executive board.
Yes.
What am I saying?
Well, after recess, we'll do that.
No, what you're saying is get to executive session, so.
Oh, so we load it in our room?
Yes.
Let's take five more minutes.
All right, hold this, speak right, five more minutes.
I need.
Okay, so we'll move on to the new business.
Old business.
Old business, sorry. As you should have gotten the invite, it's going to be a retirement party at Rurio Omagam on June, uh, 10th? What?
I would even write down.
It came by an email, Tracy Evans. I think it went to the school, the school emails. And because I didn't, I didn't notice it either, but then she sent it by personal email. But anyhow, what the deal is, it's going to be from 5:00 until 8:00, I believe, at Rurio Omagam. I will send you guys all the, I'll give you the invite. It'll be $22 and you need to let Tracy Evans know by this Friday if you plan to attend. So just, you know, email her and say, yeah, I'm going to be there. Or if you're not, then you either email her and say no, or just not respond. And I will, I'll send you, like I said, a copy of the invite since I got alone and not having noticed it or seen it.
I'll undo it because of my work.
Okay. Well, that's why I wanted to raise it tonight, to make sure that you all know about it at the point of our response and our time. Okay, so new business, draft meeting dates. Any questions there?
Just a matter of look at it and we'll prove here. So look at the last one.
Okay, there's just two things I would like to raise that we will consider before we go to without them. One is that it only shows one meeting in September and October. And I'd like us to consider whether we want to add a second meeting in those months. Traditionally, we have, although last year we just had one in September, but we didn't have two in October. But just throw it out there and consider. The other thing that I would like to, or, you know, or just people consider is if the meeting is on July 8th, the July, you know, meeting and the New York meeting, I probably would not be able to be here because I'm going to be busy with my father-in-law in Minnesota. So I'd like to, people would consider if they could move it back a week, you know, rather than the 8th, I don't know. The 13th, 14th, 15th. Long as it's not 15th, you're good, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so either 13th, 14th, or 15th. So people could just think about that and we consider June, the 8th. I appreciate that we can move it back. If that works.
Take a look at the calendar, next month. We'll solidify. Make sure you reach out to the new boardroom.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I'll definitely do that. Okay, board retreat. That's most of the information. We'll put it out there spot. At our June meeting to work out an agenda for what we'd like to be discussing. And also to take a date. I just want to, you know, probably that would be later in July. But again, we'll have to see people's availability before we take a date on that. But again, I just wanted to put it out there so that people would be thinking about it. And then finally, the superintendent evaluation. First, ask the good news, because we got it so late. The price was way higher than it was originally, $495. And we're getting the super eval for free for our self-evaluation. So we worked out quite nicely.
Where is it?
I would just also indicate that it's a little bit different format this year. It asks for superintendent to put in goals and self-assessment right into the agenda. Nick has already done that, so we are ready to go. So the one thing I would like to pick tonight is a meeting where we can get together and go over the evaluation and then set up a meeting with Nick to go over with him. So I guess what I would like to suggest is that we, I'll just get my calendar up here. So today is the 25th. What I'd like to suggest is that we do it in the second week in June. That'll give those of you who are still working two weekends to work on it. Is that, I'm trying to, you know, trying to.
Well, I think we can get concerts modified. There's a whole bunch of end-of-year responsibilities in terms of nights that we're coming here for end-of-year things, concerts, moving up ceremonies, all of that. So it's going to be difficult those first two weeks of June.
Again, the thing I'd like to do is see if we can have it done by our June 15th meeting. Because. Do you think you can do that yet?
I think it's going to depend, maybe June 7th that I can do something.
Do it.
I have a little bit of something.
Give you a version.
Although you can fill it out and, you know, and you can come by Zoom if you need to.
Yeah.
The people feel like, oh, you know, I have to get it done, I have two weekends.
Yeah.
Are you?
Can you read that?
I can get it done.
What?
Can you read email the tool out right away?
It's valid now, you should have gotten email.
I'll be right.
From super eval. And that gives you their email addresses, their username, and they give you a temporary password to get it.
Email address.
What? I think I used Gmail. I didn't use the school one, so we won't do that.
Okay. I haven't seen it come in, so.
All right, it should have come yesterday.
Yesterday, okay.
So please let me know if you didn't get it and I'll be back in touch with super eval. So I did give them all the email addresses I usually use for you, so I figured that would be.
Might have to put on to jump.
All right, but let me know if anyone didn't receive it and I will make sure that they get it, they send it out to the again. And then if you have any questions, they have a phone number there, you can call. They also have an orientation video, a whole bunch of stuff like that. So I know we used it last year and it seemed to go quite well. And I don't think we have a lot of problems with it and people are pleased with the product and the way it works. So hopefully that will be the basis this year as well.
What date are you thinking of?
Maybe 7th.
How about on the 14th, that's the future time, you think?
I prefer that over the 7th, just to lay on.
Is there any?
I don't know, I don't know if they're having a concert that night, because it's had to be rescheduled because of sex, sexuals. So I don't know what concert is.
But tentatively with that, you know, assuming there's no announcer? Everyone, he, are you? Okay, so what time would be, what time?
What time does it need to be for you, 7th?
For me to get here realistically, I can walk in here at 6:30.
So 6:30 is better for you?
It says, but I don't necessarily sponsor it for you.
All right, so we'll say 7th? Can that work for you? Okay, so I would just look for the 14th and 7th. And as we did last year, we'll just discuss it all and, you know, make sure that we're all on board with it and then we can set up a meeting with Nick to have a discussion with him as well. Okay?
Right on. So we're all on the same page, we have meetings Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. That's why it's.
All righty. So as usual, it wasn't really five minutes, we lied, but we followed that. So I'd like to turn it into exec, so first we take a break and have a recess. But what?
We're just a recess.
We should recess, yes.
We're doing that here, right?
Yeah, there's cookies right on.
About the cookies.
Yeah, well, you do it in the conference room, yeah.
Okay, we're supposed to take recess, recess.
Okay, do not have a photo.
Second?
Okay, we're supposed to take recess.
All right.
Okay, second, okay, all in favor?
Aye. Do you want a second?
I do.
Be honest. Have the.
Okay, there's nothing on the agenda.